Good morning. As we talk about strategic planning in the conference, we're talking about strategy today. Some of the strategic thinking done, the environment scan and the squad analysis, or the squad activity analysis, and also the vision. So I think we're pretty close to it. What I'd like to do now is say that we have a few more tasks today. And on those tasks, we already talked about the vision today, so we're not going to rehash that. But let me just jump into the activity itself. So move to the vision of success activity. So Amber, I'm going to call you out for just a second.
That's okay, I understand.
Sorry. I'm just the next guy. Okay. So the whole idea of the vision of success activity is, you know, just to write something. The whole activity itself, context for writing this article about what the future might be. But if you've noticed what, you know, what I put, which is best to growing town in North Carolina. That seems to have stepped somewhat in this group. And so I thought it would happen. So I appreciate it. I really appreciate it. And I'll make it more evident this next time, but it's like, you know, best town or something like that. It was just meant to get you started. So, and it did start you, but not.
(laughing).
And so I started you with a different plane than what I intended.
I told you to figure out what your thoughts are.
Yeah, it'll be a big shock. Let's see. So I did, I, so just so you know, it was a part that you, that was like me, so I bet you will find it there, but the rest of it is. All right. So the whole idea here is for you to put, to put something in the raw room. And so normally what, so I don't want you to read it just yet. But normally what I do is I have people write this in the room. Then I have people read it, whatever they have. You know, you read, everybody else in the office, and you stop, you go, and then we look for themes. And there's been a few times, a few times I've done this activity where there's somebody who's like, you know, Dan would read his, and people go, "Yeah, that's it." And it literally was like, "That's it. We want that one." And so, because it just seemed to encapsulate.
(laughing).
Dance is your welcome.
(laughing).
And so, but it always happened that way. But what generally happens is this, is that we read, we write them, we read them, and then, you know, we get the themes. Like what is it that you all agree on? You know, out of all of what we wrote? And then that's what we put on a piece of paper. Now, so what are we going to, what are we likely to get out of this activity today? What we're likely to get out of this is, I'm going to make up a number of five to seven themes where, you know, three or more of you said the same thing, whatever that is. All right? And so it won't be a statement at the end of the day. It'll just be directionally, these are the things that are important for us now. And then over next year or so, you know, you'll start to kind of flesh that out a little bit more. We might get a statement out of it, and I can take it home and kind of, you know, write it up. I may put it in a subsequent format that looks more like a paragraph, and then you'll decide whether or not it is a paragraph. Right? But that's probably what's likely to happen. Okay? So the way I like to do this activity today is there's two pages of vision response. Now, the way I want you to, the way I want you to look at this is, is that in my best efforts, if there's one response, it could be, if I break your train, then the next person's response is the town, so the next person's response is regular. And so if it's, so people have thoughts, people have complete sentences, it's a paragraph complete article. So what it, so it may end abruptly, it may not. But what I want you to do is to read each one of them slowly and see what kind of, you know, I don't like this word, what resonates with you. You know, and what, hopefully what, as you read through all of them, I want you to see what themes are generated. Now, I'll only say one more thing. So sometimes somebody in their visioning activity, you know, will write something that everybody goes, "I shouldn't, I shouldn't have thought." We all know this, it's great, but only one person wrote it. If it's that, that counts too. If it's like, "Yeah, that was, I just didn't write that," but then put that into. Read them, take them in, absorb them, think about the different perspectives, check themes, or most of the things that show up. So we're going to give you about 12 minutes, 12:30 to do that. And then get your things ready, and we'll report out.
We started. I just want to make sure.
Are you making fun of Lance now?
No, it's pretty fair.
Here.
Equally entertaining.
The quest that is in case some ice creams with sunglasses that you lost none percent of the point.
Any glasses?
(laughing).
Potato.
I don't, I'm sort of like, sunglasses, bright nose, not a big potato.
I'd say a bright name on them.
What's your?
The top.
I suppose you'll be surprised if I make that first.
All right. Can I ask you quick, so we are, first question, and I just, I'd like to share with all of you, kind of go around, is how was it leading everybody's responses? What was that like? It's about looking at more. It's positive. We all seem to be on the same page. Do what? We all seem to be on the same page. Okay, well, that's, that's mine.
Echo that, and we all seem to be positive. Future, vision, what, okay, should be.
Ready guys? So, let's do themes. So what things did you hear in overall?
Quality of life.
Quality of life. Greenways.
Smart, sustainable.
Sustainable.
Smart and sustainable.
Maintain the historical aspect of downtown.
Diversity.
More equity.
Safety.
Continue economic growth.
Friends and family.
All right. Anything else? In terms of themes.
Work, live, play. Work, live, play.
Diversity of experience.
All right. So this diversity was what?
Communities, you said, communities.
Diversity of communities? Okay.
Variety, isn't it?
Variety of?
Recreational, historical, cultural. Variety of experiences, variety of shops, I mean, variety is less than diversity. It's just a three-word word.
Okay.
I didn't see it that much, but the word history stuck.
Yeah. I underlined it.
All right. So, thank you. So a couple of things. So one is, when you see this list, how do you feel about it? How do you feel about it?
I feel the same.
Meaning?
That list, like the things that are important to me.
Feature. Okay.
Excited, energized by it. Especially if that's something that holistically the group all sees as, sees value in.
Anything else you want to say about it?
We all seem to have the same vision.
So now I'm going to take a little risk. (laughing). So Dan, that 2040 vision statement that you pulled out a few minutes ago?
Yes.
Do you find it and read it? And then I'm either going to say, "Woo-hoo," or I'm going to sit down.
Sit down, say.
All right.
By 2040, Hunterville will be a vibrant community rooted in the past while looking towards the future. It provides attractive options for its residents to live, work, play, and grow. Pursuing the highest level of excellence in town will guide growth and development in a way that prioritizes the quality of life, green spaces, and environmental safety. Meaningful economical development and multi, multimodal, I'll do that word.
This is a planning document.
Transportation.
Okay. I think I, I'll call that a victory for you all. What do you think?
I mean, I think it pretty much reads the same way, except multimodal transportation.
The other thing that, continued economic growth. So it's all there. Just, it's really, it's very similar vision, just in a paragraph form. What are you thinking, Lance?
Two that stand out to me that I didn't settle here, maybe I just didn't overhear correctly, was safe community and diversity in general.
It was not in that document.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, in general, I like it. I just.
Well, we had that.
That's.
Well, but my point in, in doing that.
Environmental safety.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what was not in this document. Environmental safety as a theme. You might have said it individually. So my point in doing that was, I was just, one, I was wondering to see, you know, if there was a big gap, and there's not a big gap. So, I mean, I think that, and usually in the comp plan process, that is fairly public, you know, and so there is some community input into that. So the fact that you all are singing off the same sheet there, I mean, I think it's, because other than Dan, I don't think anybody either A, read it, or B, knew that it existed. Is that fair?
We know it exists, it's our best.
(laughing).
I've never read that.
So I like aspects of that, but I really liked this, I don't know what number that would be.
What is, what are you, I just read.
It's the number one, two, three. On the, on the vision activity, it sounds like that, but more expansive and, Hunterville has worked to provide their community with opportunities for smart and sustainable growth throughout town. Hunterville has found unique opportunities to leverage its assets by partnering with other entities to provide their community with economic growth while adding value to the community's quality of life. It's become known for celebrating its history as a mill town while planning for its future in the 21st century. Work diligently to provide a safe and healthy community for its citizens, and Hunterville has worked to provide its citizens with a variety of recreational, historical, and cultural experiences, and these experiences also provide tourism opportunities and economic growth throughout the community. So it reads like that, but just, what was this saying?
There's a few words.
Yeah. So I like this one a lot.
I cheated, because I agree.
Is that the one you wrote, Amber? I'm giving.
No, I did not. (laughing).
All right. So, I mean, so what, so what I can do is maybe, I'll kind of, if you want, I can kind of, I'm going to type all this, but I can write, I can write this up, or just like this, or I could try and go back and forth between this and that, and maybe put them in those sentences, and see what it looks like, hoping you all will approve or not.
Rick, could you take this with you, please? Just be sure we got some of the stuff that's covered here that might not be covered in that report also. Is that fair?
I mean, that's up to you.
Do you have a copy of that?
I might. So I have, I gave a copy of the comp plan, I think you sent me a copy.
2040.
Yeah, I do have a copy there.
That's the list.
Okay. I do have a copy.
Options are good, they give us multiple.
That's great. Spoken like actions. Actually, spoken like a true counselor, poor woman. (laughing) I want some options. All right. So let me do that. Okay. I'm good, I'm just trying to show me where I'm going to take this from. Right here. Right here?
Because that sounds a little bit bland, but just standard.
Okay. So now, I'm going to take another risk. It's not on the agenda, we'll see if we can do this. So I'm going to ask you to stand up and configure yourselves in groups of two, two or three, that's not the people you've worked with before. Stand up and just find yourself a partner or two. I'm going to separate you two. I do. (laughing). You're going to be. I'm going to separate you two, or I'm just keeping my eyes on you. How's Amber? All right. All right, very good. So, so this is do the best you can activity. So if you have a vision, which you now have and confirmed, all right, then you have a sense of that. So in strategic planning, you have, you know, where I want to go, you look at it like a triangle, where I want to go, where I am, and then, what's between here and there. Right? So those become the strategic issues. With me? So what I, do what?
I'll just let you be.
All right. So what I want you to do is think about, to the extent that you know where Hunterville is as a city in terms of the organization and anything else, is what are the top two or three strategic issues that you see facing Hunterville? So you have the vision now, you know, 2040, here's where we want to go, 2030, whatever it is, what are, and you can sit down and then put whatever you want to do, but I'll give you seven minutes, what are the top two or three strategic issues that you see facing Hunterville over the next little box. You can, take, take 10 minutes, take a walk, come back. What are the strategic issues, you said? Number, number three.
Sure.
10 minutes. So 10 till. Yeah, 10 to 3. Yes. Take pictures. I'm going to, I'm going to pull them, but you don't need to take pictures of them. But these strategies, you know, the ones I, please, so, carry those out.
(inaudible).
Alright, welcome back. Alright, so. Stacy, your strategic issues, did you come up with?
We talked about, there's a character in Huntersville that we would like to see as maintain, a historical character. And, you know, you have new investors coming in, new developers coming in, who want to create this new modern downtown, this new modern area. But as I was telling Stacy, what attracted me to Huntersville is like Stacy sees all this story, their store, their country stores. I've never, bro, I've never seen that before. And that's a character, that's the essence of what Huntersville is. The rural is the character of it, and how do we blend the character with the new? And we came up with town should invest in the rural aspects of, can the town invest in the rural aspects to maintain the historical character of Huntersville as a vision.
So this, so that's what you should do. The strategic issue, you're interested in, the strategic issue is maintaining, I'm gonna say this right now, maintaining the rural character.
Yeah, maintaining the character that draws people here. Because that's what we broke, that's still something that draws people in, but it's an issue too, because these families have a right to sell the property. And so it's just like a mess of, a mess. A mess of a mess.
Okay. So. I'm not done with this yet, but I'm not sure what to do with it yet. Thank you. Another strategic issue, what's the big challenges between getting us from here to there? Lance and Andrew.
And Dan.
Do what?
And Dan. Sorry, can you ask a question?
What are the strategic issues?
Alex, I was like.
Sorry, really, I don't want to. Okay, so I come back to you.
Yeah, that's probably the best.
Okay, how about over here? What'd you come up with?
I was with those guys, I was playing a command later.
Exactly. I wasn't with that group, okay, how about? We'll start at one or two.
Transportation. And I would say that transportation holistically, so whether you're looking at transportation, cars, roads, transit, all the above.
Alright, yep, that's a strategic issue, alright, so now Lance, I'll come back.
One of the topics we've covered is, it's not necessarily around rural, 100% is schools. We definitely, we figure out how to be better, how to be able to be more responsive to our citizens. And I don't know exactly, it's me, I didn't really say this, but I meant to say it, is trying to figure out how to get county, state, and any other entity that we have to deal with to respect what we need and help us deliver what's best to our citizens.
So the answer here might not be take the school board over, so to speak, but it might be how do we, you know, there, this, and I listened to you over this morning, it's like this is, there's stuff going on that you all want to have an impact on, that may or may not, that is not directly related to what the newspapers do, but it's indirectly related and you can influence it.
This is a large part of our community and we don't have any weight to.
Correct, because it impacts you all and people, and all that stuff, but there's something about that that needs further.
It also goes to the vision of, you know, if we want to make Huntersville a people place for people to live, work, and play, part of that, I mean, especially the families is, how good are the schools?
And that goes into quality of life too, because it's not quality education.
I have people who might hear that the second they get to school age or a certain grade level, they're like, wow. And that drives me batty.
All I can say is if you have children, you know what that grand dance is about, because you just, and you start five years early, because you have to. I don't know how this is in here, but people get in line, you know, the child is born, they're in line, and I'm not, I'm not making that up. Alright, other strategic issues?
Safety. Safety, safe, equitable community.
Okay?
Regional partnerships.
Okay. Alright.
We also said revenue for our plans.
I think we said funding.
You said money. We always complain about it.
That's it, money.
Money.
Yeah. Okay, go. Alright. Good? Alright. Now, get another risk. Alright, so what I want you to do now is we're gonna jump ahead over values, go to the last, I'm gonna say the last page, let's see. Next to the last page, it will say, it will say. It will say. It will say. No. It won't say anything because you don't have it. So, I'm gonna hand it, I'm gonna hand something out, just in case you're awake. Okay. Or if I'm awake, okay, so what we're gonna do now is I'm gonna give you, so what I did was I took current year goals and I put them under some buckets that may end up looking a lot like this, okay? So what I wanted to do is give you this year's goals already working on. So we're not really paying attention to that right now, what I want you to pay attention to are the buckets.
Where did these all come from?
These were both that were chosen by the council. I mean, so just like, so I got it from, that's the old, that's old boy. Yeah. So don't focus on the goals right now, because that's not, that'll come. I'm just looking through the buckets. So they don't capture everything here, but it captures most things, is that fair? So this is what makes, these buckets are what make it more strategic, because you're not just thinking about, you know, renewing the sidewalks on Main Street or, you know, redoing the infrastructure on Main Street, that's important, gotta do it, but it's bigger than that. Okay? So. What I'd like to do, is not right now, but I'll play with it back in Wake Forest, is I may change order to these buckets to reflect, and I'll add a bucket. I'm not sure schools, I'm not sure where that might fit, but it'll either put it somewhere or not, but it's own place. But I'll put these up here and then give it back to you, is that alright? Because this is what makes it more strategic, it says versus, because we're trying to make you think bigger than just, you know, a playground on such and such a street or a dog park. You know, we have cultural resources, we have history, so under like parks, recreation tourism, cultural resources, that would be where a lot of the history stuff would come from. Potentially. And ultimately, these buckets have to form for you. So what I'm making, I'm not gonna rework them, and then if you have any tweaks, that's great, I'll make them or you can make them on your own. But I would encourage you to sit with these for a year and say, okay, they work, you can make them all fit, or really this one doesn't work, and let's just change it. Does that make it sense? Okay? I can do that. What the other part is, well, you all really haven't mentioned much about infrastructure, so, and to that, but, you know, I can take, I can take that out and still keep infrastructure, because you have some stuff under it. So. Alright, good? How are we doing? Good, alright, so now we'll go back to values. My last comment about the buckets is this, is that the buckets give you an idea of where you're spending your time and money and your time. Like for example, if, you know, there was nothing there under parks, recreation tourism, and cultural stuff, you know, I would be asking you, you know, what the hell are you doing, not doing something about that? Or, you know, or if everything was under, under infrastructure, you know, I still might ask the same question, but to make it really good reason why it's all around about infrastructure, because that's where you are. You know what I mean, so it's not a, it's not 100% on anything, the idea is it gives you a sense of saying, well, this is where we're paying attention. Is this where we need to be paying attention on? Does that make it sense? Okay. And it gives other people, it's just around transparency as well, right? It's like, you know, this, these are the buckets that are important, we can change them, but this is what's under them, that's what you're leaving.
The one thing that checks out in these connected innovation to our community.
Yeah. And so that would be something for you all to think about.
But also you have to think these were written during COVID times, so we weren't really thinking about connections.
Well, we were still in the, I mean, we can talk about.
Yeah. But I mean, it also was kind of like a cultural, like snapshot of where our brains were during that time. We weren't thinking about fun. We really weren't. When this was done, when we were in, that was the COVID, we weren't thinking about doing fun stuff in community, because everybody was six feet apart and told us stay home.
Alright. Yeah, very distinct time. Alright, thank you. So now let's go back, turn back a page or two to values, and let me talk to you about what those are, and how you can use them, and how to really utilize them. So values, so this is really around the organization's values and around your values as a council. This is not about ways of working together, in a sense, not like ground rules, these are values that you use to make decisions. Alright? And so you all gave me some values, and I put them down. And so it's really primarily, now that, I'm gonna just be honest with you, my experience with people, that there are some things, like something you want respect in there, that's fine. You know, it's not, you can, that's a process, if you think about it, I'm on love, if you want that in there, that's great, I'd encourage other values. And I'll just say right up front, if I can take this off the table, continuous learning is not a value for decision making. It's a value to add, and keep it in the process of how I want to, us to behave as a council, it's great, but it's not a value for decision making. Does that make it sense? So what I want you to do is I want to take you, give you a couple of minutes to review what people, what you all put in, in whatever activity. What I want you to do too is really, if you want, you go ahead and look at, see what, which ones match up and are their themes.
Be strategic about when you choose to go to the restroom because they've got the snake door open and it's out.
They've got our number.
Alright, this is what I want you to do. I'm gonna put you, I want you to mix up the answer, one group of three, one group of four, and I want you to, I'm gonna see if you can come up with a list, I'm gonna make up a number like seven. Because after seven or eight, if you really push it, it gets too many. And the fact is that we use many values to do stuff, right? I'm just looking for what you all think, and you already kind of know that, based on the themes I'm managing. You know, what are those important values that you think you need to follow around making decisions? And so I want you to come up with a list, but I also want you to talk about it with each other and say, why, why do I think this one's important? Yeah, it's a theme, you got it, I agree with it, or I don't, or I like this one better, or whatever, but I want to give you about 15 minutes to play with it. And then come back with, if you can come back with a list of seven, then it works. Does that make it sense? So you can go out, because we're not going out this way, but, this way, but go wherever you want for 15 minutes, it is about 1:00, 7:00. Come back about 1:25 and we'll see where we go with this, alright? And get to a list, it will make it work. So we have three that. So, we have three that are, unless there actually are several that are very similar. So, when you see this list, what do you, what do you come up with? What do you think?
We're on the same page.
We're on the same page.
Pretty close, yep. So I see, um, honesty, you can use either, either of those words, honesty or integrity. What do you mean by, so, when I look at money, I see fiscal and responsible?
Yes.
So I, I see accountability. So that's why maybe, that's why we're using this.
I think those are different. I mean, accountability, to me accountability for actions or reactions.
That's fine, that's fine, got it, thank you. Safety. How's that, what does that mean?
Welfare, welfare, responsible for the overall welfare.
So you take, you're taking into consideration the whole? That, is that what you meant? This is what I want you to do, is this. Don't like the words, I, I get safety, and if you want to keep the debts up to you all, I may play with this a little bit if that's alright? Because it's, 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 it's different than safety, but it's care for the whole. Yeah, I don't know if there's a word, one word that captures that. You know, systems view doesn't quite capture it. You know, is that you, you're looking out for the best of Huntersville.
General welfare?
I was gonna say general welfare.
Okay, so we have, it's alright, transparency, honesty, accountability, equity, teamwork. Okay, so these two, this is, this is something that you, this is a norm. And this is, these two are good norms around how we interact with each other.
But for us, respect isn't just how we interact with citizens or each other, it's also having respect for the seat in the office.
I get that, I get that. I'm not, we're not in disagreement. The only thing I'm talking about is, is this a value for decision making? And my response would be, no, it's not. And you use respect, you want, it's a norm that you want to have in this group, which is different than the values to make decisions. So I'm not saying that this is not important to the group, because it is. It's just not, these two are not values for decision making. This is a process, check your ego at the door, or off the same, or whatever it is that you want, that's a group norm.
Can I take the other side of the argument?
Sure.
I've got to wish Stacy's opinion, even though it might not drive with mine.
You know, if you would, if you would have more credibility with me if you said that about Lance, but. Sure, and I agree with you a thousand percent. I just don't think, and, and I'm, it's your list, so you want respect up there, it's your list. I think, so, I do think you have to have respect for each other's opinion for the office. I, I agree a thousand percent, there's no disagreement at all. This is a list for, for decision making. This, and what, what you just said, what you just said is how you relate to each other. And it's, it may be at the station without a, a difference without a distinction. So I'm fine to leave it up there if you want, but I'm just trying to say, it's not, you use it every day and you want it as a ground rule. And it's fine to keep it up there.
Point out one thing. I hear a pretty much handout respect. My counter to it is that transparency, honesty, and working as a team contribute to factor of respect.
Let me give you a military analogy. I might not like you, but I gotta respect your rank. You might not like your commanding officer personally, but you got to respect that rank. And I'll as the commissioner for our day, I'm sure it's the second day, you can please talk about it.
Yeah, but I think part of that's accountability.
Well, we can throw all the advantages in.
I, I agree with you, and it's not, this is just about decision making. And so, again, I'll move on.
So, to begin with, the whole respect, maybe.
You all are killing me.
I am. But when you, but when a decision is made, should that decision not be respected? Once the decision is made, should there not be respect for the fact that the majority of the board has said X?
Alright, so that's, that's also a group.
That's what I'm saying, once, once it's voted on, we move on. I think that's what's happening.
That's also a group norm, so, I'm gonna, I'm gonna back out of this conversation. It's fine, this is a great conversation. So to me, this is a, these are group norms, like once the decision made, we support it, we move on. And, you know, that, that's how we want to work together, that's, that's how we want to work together. That's a, so for example, um, you know, showing up on time, you know, keep, you know, only stay two hours for a meeting, you know, doing what's.
I block out five.
Alright, but you get my point. That's right, that's right. Alright, see, okay.
I think there's enough discussion about that, and we think it's an important issue, I think respect should stand there.
It's your list, it's your list, okay, so can you see it again?
Yeah. I was just trying to give another word for respect, so we really quit arguing.
So, can I scratch off, check your ego at the door?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, alright.
Hold on a second.
Exactly, thanks, mom. Alright, alright, so now. Let's take a break while some hoops ahead.
Bring the steed in.
Take, take this, take ten minutes and come back, and then we're gonna do the last activity. And if you're good, you get out of here. Naps, that's it. Naps for all.
That is fun.
But before we do that, what I'd like to do is, if it's alright with you, is offer another observation. Now?
Yep.
In, in, in group work, um, when people come together, there's, there's a really well-known, well-documented way that that generally happens. And the first, one of the first things that happens in groups is people try to establish significance. It's like, hey, I exist, I'm important, move over, right? And so, I mean, that's how it shows up, I, hum, model, you may have heard forming, storming, norming, and performing. So modeling models, a little crisis, piss on, piss off, and then, you know, maybe make up, kiss and make up. Because the whole part about teamwork is around, am I important? And, you know, where's power from the lie? And so that's what a part of what you all struggle with. It's very common, I mean, it's not uncommon, it's, that's the way it happens. So you're trying to sort that out. And so, you'll sort it out the way you sort it out, that's bottom line. The part what you're struggling with is, is, am, am I going to be respected enough that my voice counts? And voice is important to many of you in this room. Not just your voice, but other voices that you represent, or think you represent. Alright, so the part of it is, if you can trust each other well enough to, to relax. When you all get in a, a zone of, so I'll use the, the last example, when you brought up, you know, there's nothing about this, you know, you said, well, it was COVID, and we weren't having, we weren't thinking about fun, right? And so I took that as a little defensive. And so, if you'd let me ride with that for just a second, is, is, when you all are defensive or reactive, it creates a dynamic that doesn't help you. And that's for everybody, but I was watching it today, and it served us two or three times. You know, just, so, in fact, in trust is, you know, at least this morning, it was more of an issue than I think it is this afternoon. But still, trust is still an issue, because I encourage you to keep being open to each other enough to where you can establish full trust, so that when somebody makes a comment, somebody else won't make it a personal, won't feel like it's a personal attack. Because there's, it feels to me that you all want to, I mean, based on the vision, that you want to work together. The question comes for yourself, is how can I relax enough to let that happen? Because my experience with, with councils is, you, you can be divided, and it's, it's great fun and great mischief. And that, it may be the right thing to do, but it may not be the right thing to do. So if you want to, or if you want to achieve something, you need each other to do that. Because you can't do it by yourself. You can wreck it. I, one stories about how I personally wrecked systems, I can share it with you. It's easier to wreck than to maintain. But that, that the opportunity is, relax, share, and you all are pretty good at being direct with each other. I, I didn't see that as a problem. So, if you want to say that, good, bad, or different, you can tell me. Watched up?
Well, sorry, I think the atmosphere is a lot calmer now. I, I felt a lot of tenseness this morning, a lot of fenster, a lot of work. And I, I don't feel that right now. I think there's still air, but I think it's a better situation, that's just damn true.
I think it, it's almost endearing, because, like you said, um, being reactive or defensive, it's not, it wasn't like Stacy's comment wasn't defensive about herself, it was defensive about the board. Like, so it's not even like an individual defense, like we're defensive about each other, and everyone's a whole, which I think is actually really difficult.
Well, like, what else, like, for me, it wasn't being defensive. I was thinking back to that time, that sucked. And there are people who were part of this process that weren't part of it anymore, and they didn't have negative intentions in what they did. So I think you get it, because I mean, even though they're not with us, I'm still protective of her, even though, you know, we didn't all get along all the time. But there was, you know, like, those things weren't bad about it, it's like, nobody left something out to be intentionally, like, uncommon, so.
Correct, yeah. And I think that that's, if you all could maintain that kind of a, a thought process, which is, you know, whatever happened then, did or didn't happen then, and there's good reasons for it. And even if there's not, it doesn't matter, because you're all where you are now. And you have to, either you're gonna do something about it or not. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Oh, I'm just smiling.
You are smiling, that's why, that's why I'm calling.
Being the only person of color on this board, and during the course of the election, a lot of folks on this board longed up. But see, I was, I received a lot of emails from people out there, the constituents. Because I wouldn't state where I stood on a certain position. And that particular committee, committee, had represented us on this board. And I took it, and during the course of the election, the attack types of person, being a black. Being, and the fact that, um, most of this board, I guess you all didn't run, weren't aware of it, because I wouldn't talk about it, but you could see during the whole course of the, the campaign, there was just you guys, one group, and myself. And, um, now that I got a light there, not that I didn't like it, I remember, but then I came before the place. So, I'm trying to put that back aside, but it's hard, because I know there's people out there that still dislike who I am and whoever I present. And maybe there's something, I'm gonna have a bone for you, you don't understand. Okay, that's something like that. So, I have to believe in myself accordingly, on this board. It was never in my life, that I had, that I had that directly towards me.
Sure.
Being a black candidate, and I don't consider myself, I don't walk around wearing my ethnicity on my shoulder, because I've accomplished a lot. But they put me in a space, they put me in a, in a, in a spot where I said, this is not in Huntersville that I thought I was living in. And that's why I said this smile today, not that I don't mean to loan anybody, but that's where they put me in, this group. So, that's how I believe in myself accordingly. I sit back, I'm quiet, and I watch, I pay attention.
Thank you. You want? Part of what comes up for me, and you ain't shared your individual experience, but I, I wonder, and I know not this is more rhetorical, but everybody probably has some experience around that. And the point to me that I would want to make is that there, you know, there's stuff that everybody's taking that doesn't look, you know, when you just look at you, or you, or you, you don't see that. But there's, you know, you take hits all the time as a council person.
I can relate to you on that more levels than you think. Because imagine having things held against you because your dad was elected. I'm paying for the sins of my father, and all I did was want to run for office. So I mean, and then I was a young female, and, and a little group by myself. And there were times in the polls, the first go, where I would just sit there like, I'm by myself, this is awful. So I understand where you're coming from. And I'm sorry that you felt like that, because I've known you forever, and I've had so much fun with you over these years. So I'm glad that you said that, and maybe now that's a good way for everyone to start healing. Because when I first got on to my first go, I felt like you did, and I was just like, oh, it's the inner stuff, okay. So, I'm very sorry to let you that, it's not a fun experience.
One of the things that running for office and, and so many people that have been elected, something on this room, running for office and being elected, a person you even think you're the center of attention of everything, I believe it's the loneliest thing you can possibly do. You're completely isolated. You have people who are allies, but at the end of the day, it's all about you, and I swear, and, and I could be completely wrong, but I feel like it's the loneliest thing you can possibly do. You're completely by yourself, you're battling with all kinds of things going on in your head, and you're just trying to figure out, am I doing the right thing, am I listening to the right people? You know, when these people, when people come at me, especially during campaign, I mean, I think we all said, we're gonna finish last, dead last. Guaranteed I screwed everything up, I'm dead last this time. And it's just, my experience is obviously much different than yours. Can't be equals in, in that way, and so I'm not trying to compare what I, what I went through to what you went through. But it is just, it's got range. And I do appreciate what you said, and, you know, obviously, my goal, campaign season's over. I want to work with you, I want to work with you, work with you, work with everyone in this room, set pace. But that's just my perspective. But.
It's all for you, that's right.
Yeah, you know, for me, it's GSE, get stuff done, that's where I'm at now.
Thank you. Alright, move to the last task. So, I asked each of you to think about goals for the upcoming year. So those are on the last couple of pages. This may be a memory test for you, for this. Which ones did I put down? Okay, this assumption. That's exactly. So first, let's see if we can find our goals that each of you put down. Read through them and see if, if there's a seven, seven, eight, ten that look like you. The potential goals for next year, so what I want you to do is find your list. That's right, this is where the day falls more. So we'll have a different process if you can't do that. Okay, so let's do this, since that's something I have. Yes. Yes, don't let me forget, because I haven't done it yet. Alright, so this is what I want you to do, is this is, this plus the buckets that I gave you for the current year goals. These are the things that you say you want to focus on. So what I want you to do right now is go through the whole list of goals and kind of begin to call them down, and say, these, in my mind, yes, no, yes, no. And I want you to be that kind of discreet. And I want you to be that kind of discreet.
For all the goals?
For the potential goals. So if you know which ones you, yours or theirs?
Yes, I do.
Okay, do you know yours? All right, so do you know your goals? Did those you put?
I think it's the goals.
Well, if you did. Who gets to play with who, maybe, that's the question. And, okay, I'm going to stop there. But if you know your goal, did you know your goals? Okay, did you, all right. So now what I want you to do, so if you know your goals, is to, is to now call them down. You know, if you had ten, let's come up with five. And I do, because I want you to prioritize your list of goals. Thanks, Amber. Sorry. Oh, now you're him.
Stacy.
I want you to remember me, like, mine are very.
That's the wrong answer, Stacy. That's right. No, but mine are really the important ones. Okay, I got it.
Actually, some of mine, I included other people's goals, because I knew that they were about to work to them. Someone told me, guess it's the right voting.
All right.
Else, is this mine?
Is it not on there?
I mean, yes.
I may have, I may have cut it based, in that degree, I apologize. It happens. So put those, put the points that you think are most important on your list.
Close. Yes, yes.
If it's a matter of that, I'm not paying, I'm not, I'm not. All right, we're going to take it down a minute.
You said five, right?
Yeah. You can get it down there. All right, so this is what I want you to do. I want you three to share, and then see if you can ultimately bring it down. Same five, same, well, yeah, same five. Get closer. See, get closer, that's, that's the idea. See if you get closer, share and get closer. We'll see what shows up.
Mine?
Either or. Hopefully I get the issue.
I don't know.
I'm sure I'm.
I have neither.
What?
I'd like to sound a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, okay. Um, this is kind of, this is kind of, but I think it, can we just first come here?
There's a lot of stuff.
I worked with different.
Maybe just on some more.
Okay.
You think so?
I don't know.
I'm not on the summer channel.
That's right, that's right, that's right. Exactly. It's exactly what I thought.
I don't think it's.
I'm not making attention to it.
No, everybody is actually where I go.
Put them in S S.
I don't have it on.
Okay, so this is what I want you to do now.
Okay.
Is I want you to go for this group and you to go for this group and sort again.
Oh boy. I like the option.
We're not gonna agree.
We got a couple.
At the end of the day, we'll have ten goals.
That's all right.
But we only ten.
Sorry.
Let's see.
I got one. Well, I pulled one off. So, all right.
That's your level.
So, another time.
Good.
We agree.
Yes, that's what it was. Cause we just talked about that recently.
We all agree.
For nature's purposes.
Yeah.
And then ADA combined sidewalks.
Yeah.
I wanted to talk about everything. I'm worried about doing this.
Properly, we need to stay in a regular position.
What are all here, what are all here that you?
Six, first six.
We have highlights.
Good.
This one has some things we've all, we've several parts of laws.
Yes.
I had a lot of good factors.
Yeah, like the where is the other one? That's a whole program they have. You're gonna teach it at the adults' center, like two generations. So, we're gonna lobby on that and eat and drink and stuff in it. Cause those are those things like, so things up here. So, things up here are just like, you know, the barrel or the delivery. Here, we'll just run our own. So, here, we'll just like, um. That's what we're saying. We know that it's there. Now, that it's there, now we can do that. So, it's something about political issues.
Oh, I see.
So, Hunter'sville, he's really rich, not like.
Correct, depends on if it work or not.
As time goes by, you know.
And that's why I'm trying to put it together. It's not a system. Most of those. And you get a lot of this stuff other ways.
Yeah, you're okay.
Correct. I want to start with that. We can't always say.
It's different, it's different.
In terms of representations. What is a great adoption? You can't, you can't, you can't. You can't, you can't. You can't, you can't.
We just want to.
It's different, it's different.
We'll talk to them. Terms of representation. What is a great adoption? You can't, you can't. You can't, you can't. You can't, you can't.
Three.
Right now, now. We didn't agree on that. Well, there's just so much.
How many do we have to do? We take both. I'm curious. Can you follow? So, we're so good. She was maybe wrong. So, I'm getting a statement from her. Um, I wish I wasn't got your items and I need to show the office. Because we, and you will see, and it's like, roof like, or something top. Let's see, I think for other things, like, the slash down. So it would lobby on that, the need to be looking at it. Because those are those things like, so things up here, like, yeah, like Harold, so you can write the things. Harold lives in Hunter'sville. So Harold, that's my name. We know a lot of things, but not that good. Now that Harold's here, now we feel that way. It's something about Hunter'sville. Unfortunately, so Hunter'sville, he's really for each one, like.
Correct, depends on if it work or not. And you get a lot of this stuff on the way as.
We take over. I'm curious. She was maybe promising. So I'm gonna have to see for now. Um, our work time isn't much items, I need to show the office. Because we, and you will see, and it's like, a roof like, so something to see I need for other things, like. The slash down. It's five hundred thousand dollars. The whole point is that it would be eighteen major. If that does not explain government. I mean, look, there's a branch out right there, so that's why, like, I'm hiring, you know, fronts of tax. And I've seen, and we have these situation on, you're up for twenty, twenty quarter, or it's like three parts before half, so I would make a workup. And we have this job on our budget, so too. That's a little bit, yeah. We're getting.
The washroom and stuff like that?
Yeah, we're getting one of them. We're getting one at twenty, twenty five, and one back. Because I can try to like, skip over the town. One from that park is important because it brings. Now, if you're watching, it has to be fun. Okay. You're wrong, but we'll listen.
I know it's needed and prepared for the not here talking about it. Preparing for, um, many projects, we know, for, for the, yeah.
I like this one. The, my part of other funding courses.
Definitely. I mean, we're afford that there to go.
Here's a one or two things out there, which is something else, I do. Even the money, we talked about, you know, the stuff we have to stop. Which one is that?
Did he give the books? Uh, I would drop, I'll drop spending.
For those who see you here. No, there's a competition. So. I'm definitely saying the same thing. But.
Sorry, you can say that, okay, I got it. We're just paying.
I was just telling you, it's.
The grants. That's the significant. For the board, yeah, this is. Yeah.
You know, there's the person, it's other person.
All right, so, thank you all for doing that. Like to hear your, I wanna hear a little bit about the process, since we're talking about it. We talked about that, but that was the process of coding down this with each other.
Kind of you see.
Kind of you.
We kind of picked off of unintentionals, you don't know, but we kind of picked off of each other's list. Someone said, oh, I like this, oh, that's mine, oh, I like this, oh, that's mine. And I think also avoiding ones that we knew that other people weren't gonna like, or like, it's non-negotiable, it's not even talk about it.
Say the conflict, like.
Yeah.
I think there were, there were some, I know there was at least one or two where it was like, there's a snippet, one thought here, and then someone else had like, that thought, and a couple other things, it's like, yes, but the one thing has a little more detail going on.
All right. How about you, how was it?
I was good.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, we worked out, we took his top five, kept my top five, and then we negotiated, plus number one to end, number one to end, and filled it down to our five, and then we shut this up.
All right, so. What do you have? So we'll just listen to them, then I'll write them off.
Let's start on this.
Sure.
Yeah, you can go ahead, you guys.
All right, number one, reducing town manager spending gap to twenty-five thousand. Number two, establishing Hunter'sville identity as a community. Number three, additional clinical workers, which we need. So that's additional clinical, social workers.
Got that, got that.
Number four, additional SROs for all high schools, plus a sergeant along with people doing the Hunter'sville SROs. Number five was keeping tax rate at revenue.
So the SROs, is that, how's that connected to this decision?
We provide SROs to the local high school, high schools.
Here, it's.
We get some reimbursement back from the county on that. But there is a desperate and definite need with what we have at our institution to learn.
Gotcha, in, in Raleigh, it's, it's accounted for, yeah, so that's where that was coming from. All right, good job, so.
So five, we can, we have.
Those are the five. What do you have?
All right, in no particular order. Affordable housing partnerships. I would like to include discussing possibility of applying for other funding sources, in addition to the RA group's EBD grants and American Department. Looking at additional.
Great.
Yep.
And also, Hunter'sville has a lot of sort of landmarks which sign into recognition that these various locations and communities can be funded. Public health slash safety, social workers, EBD, NRT, EBD, fire station, I'm making a lot of escape. And ADA compliant cycles.
Minnesota.
Minnesota.
We did bring up, about during our, during our discussion, we did bring up the SRO thing. But we talked about, kind of what you were saying, the whole conversation is. For me, it infuriates me that the town has to pay to have officers there when CNS has their own police department. And as a county, we share, like, for instance, North Mac, we, that is a Hunter'sville and a Charlotte school. But Hunter'sville is paying for the police officers to go there. So are we getting, some of our schools are Hunter'sville residents and Charlotte residents. And ECT kids. So, but I'd say us as a town would have to take on the bulk of supplying these SROs, like, say, so saying, what about getting, somehow getting the shares to come in as opposed to HBD? I didn't, so, we were on board with SROs, SROs, we all said yes to it, but not necessarily if it's HBD has to be the one.
Well, I, I think if you ask, in North County, shares are market stashed up, and providing all schools in North County, officers get SROs.
I think this is a topic that's not for here. Correct, well, but, correct, and there's no, but I think your initial point was.
I was just trying to show you that we have the same conversations about a lot of the same topics.
Problem I have with your list is. Is that the next part they have to problem?
I mean, you run your whole campaign on sculpture workers for the police department, it doesn't even make you.
It's all they are in here.
It's a check. That's right.
That's what we said.
It's just a blood pressure check, right? It's a blood pressure check, that's all that was, okay.
What you're saying, you're probably won't.
You gotta break that, you gotta.
They have to, yeah, he thought the group energy was low, he thought that he needed to get you started, so, and he did. I hadn't seen energy like that for all time, good, my job.
Titanic guy.
All right, so this is gonna be my suggestion, so first of all, what I'd like to do is. Is ask each, each group to, to write out the five that you have, then I'm gonna write those out and send them back. And so, the idea was to have some of this conversation now so that you can begin to think about what's important. All right, so that, there was no decision made today necessarily, although I do think some general decisions were made. So, and then, and then at the end of the day, you know, what gets funded is what's gonna get funded, and so you all have those discussions. So, so that's, if that's all right with you, then that's what we'll do then in the budget coming up in a couple weeks, and that's when you have a chance to, between now and then, talk to each other and figure out some more stuff to see how you wanna play with it, but then, on the budget day, we'll be doing that, fair? So let me take you back to the, the, the goals you chose, what did you notice about the goals you chose? Team event, was it team event?
I did notice that I was reading a lot of other people's, I'm like, a middle schooler apparently, except the little hearts next to ones that made me actually, but ooh, I love that. I found myself loving a lot of other people's ideas that I had thought of or considered.
Okay. We have some more ideas and goals. You have some more stuff. In different ways it was. Part of what I heard was, was activities, so for example, reducing the city manager's limit, that's, that's an activity. That's, I mean, it's not a goal in the sense of a goal, you know what I mean, like, like ADA compliant sidewalks, that's a goal, or SROs over here, that's a goal. Make, make sense? And so, what I wanna do is just give you, not to do today, but when we get your list back, is look at what is a activity, like something that we can do today, or, you know, in the short term, versus something that's more long term. Part of what I hear in the goals is, there's things that you want to tackle now, like the school thing, right? And that may be because that's just a passion, or because it's on fire. And part of our form of that is, it, there may be a time now where you're more reactive than not, because there's either your passion or something, or something's on fire. But those are more, more than likely, activities. And so, what I'm trying to bump you up to is more strategic goals. Okay? Like, down, like, you're one about partnering for more funding, or partner for funding for economic development or something, you know, that's a, that's a longer term goal in addition. Does that make sense?
I can just throw it out there, because I knew you would mention this, it almost goes to that point. Our, our, I see the pledge items as, by means as they apply, as close to that, kind of set, being able to say, we have a fire here, get this done.
Yeah, so that's not a goal you should have, that's just an activity you should do. Okay. I, I, and I, I hear that. I hear that. I hear that. So maybe, for three months, it's a goal, but after that, it's not a goal, but, you know, but it's not a goal, that's a goal between you all, or that's something that, you know, we're trying to figure this out, but a long term goal is, you know, getting, you know, uh, I don't know, affordable housing, that's a goal, or, you know, livable housing, or whatever, that's a, that's a longer term goal.
Build out Greenway system.
Yeah, build out the Greenway system, those are long term goals, or create five events to showcase the history of, you know, or. Yeah.
We got a whole year coming.
Good. So does that make sense? So we're looking more for strategic goals, because these are the things that are in your way. So for example, I didn't hear anything about transportation. So this might be a chance for you to think about.
We did talk about during our conversation, infrastructure, we're gonna utilize psychology.
Okay, and so that may be something you wanna think about, so you did an initial, you know, kind of calling down, so there's a lot of things that you know are not gonna be on the list for next year. So what is gonna be on the list is still yet to be determined, but I'll get this back to you by Monday, if not sooner, and the whole list, the whole thing, and you can then begin to think about what goals might line up more to this or the other six buckets, that are more strategic.
So Rick, once you get all this stuff together, all directed, hey, you're gonna do what with that information?
I'm gonna give, what you put on these pieces of paper today are gonna come back to you all by Monday, so I, my normal process is.
To every single.
So what I, my normal process is to, to these two, and then they can disseminate it, but I can also send it, it's up to you, I can send it directly to each of you.
Send it all.
I'm gonna just boil it straight to it.
So that's what I'm gonna do with it, then I'm gonna have a follow up call with these two, and that, and, and at least at this moment, that's where my association and fund with this group will end. Over this.
How could he?
Sorry, I'll never forget this group, but that's not like a conversation. So I will have some closing comments, but, so, two things, I, I have some stuff I wanna share, uh, but I, so I wanted, because I talked about team, you know, team stuff or process stuff, right? So I'm gonna give you two things that you can do, and then, I'll leave that alone, and then I'll add some closing remarks, and we'll be, we'll be done, and you have some questions. Fair? All right.
Can we find out what our grade is?
You're great. That's right, it's A, it's an A, trust me. So there's, here's an activity called, I bring, I need. And so, you literally could do this, like, in others, I wouldn't look at a public meeting, but you know, you can do this, like, you know, together, in attendance, you know, for a beer or something. Uh, but what it is, you have your name, you say, hey, like, if I were doing this with a group, I might say, you know, I bring humor, and I need honesty. You know, you, it could be, so that could be the one end, the other end is, you know, I bring, you know, twenty-five years of municipal experience, you know, in planning and whatever. And I need, you know, listen to it, or whatever. So this, so this doesn't mean that you get these things, it just means that this is what you bring, this is what you need, you know what I'm saying? Now, you can make an agreement to these things, but this is more letting people know what is in, you know, what, you know, what is in the room, or what you need. Fair, clear? So literally, you could just go up and, you know, like, if you're having lunch at some point, just put it up there, write it up, and then say, share it, and then talk about it. All right, that's one piece. Another thing is you can have some gravities. And I listened to you all today, and here's what I've come up with for you all so far. Respect, chopper, be curious, that's my petition. Listen as an ally. Think for the whole, think about the whole, like just my piece of, and then.
Hands over that.
Okay, so. That's right. This applies more to some than to others, okay. You will give it, yeah. Oh, God, it's, it's, I don't know, I think we're done, we're close for you there. So this, look, so you can modify this, you can do what you want with it, but I think that this, this accurately describes at least part of how you all do operate, or want to operate. I think you're quite there, but I think you do wanna operate generally this way. Let me say a word about being curious. A lot of times when, when people get most irritated at somebody else, which, I have it rarely in this group, but when it happens, instead of getting irritated, get curious. Why is it, help me understand that point of view. And that's gonna take a while to get through that mental, but, you know, help me understand why that's important, help me to understand what's going on, that this is, you're so passionate, or help me understand, you know, because I think I'm saying the same thing, but that's not what you need, whatever it is, but just to get curious about. Because what that does, is it teases out the interest behind the position, which, we want people to come to some common ground, versus saying, I like this, I don't like that, you don't like, you don't need, because you're not gonna come to any common ground that way. Make sense? All right. How do you think you did today? This is your chance to correct yourself. Did you get, did you get what you came for, more, less, different?
Be interested to see how it's going. Move this one forward. Okay, I mean, there's a lot of open discussion, I think, you express your views, good, that, got it out there, I appreciate that.
I think I'm walking away recognizing that. The board is more in line with the overarching goals and ideas and vision for our future. And it's gonna be important to be curious, and listen to each other, so that we understand where everybody's coming from, when we're talking about the solutions, because everybody's gonna be six or seven solutions sitting at the table, and we need to be able to respect one another enough to listen and ask those citizens to understand.
And a lot of the issue should be process, okay? And so then you're gonna have to weigh out, once it becomes clear, you have to weigh out efficiency versus process, and so that's what's gonna get a little time, because you're gonna have passions about things, right yourself. And you're gonna have, if you want something to happen, you're gonna have to give. That's a, that's individual conversation with yourself, thank you, others. You stay. I appreciate it.
That's a global problem.
You came, and you stayed, okay. I appreciate it. You gonna say anything today? No, I knew it. But thanks. Thanks, all right, Dan, you wanna say anything?
Uh, enjoyed Saturday. Been a while since I last had a Saturday with all the friends, uh, I think we've got some work to do. Derek, I think you and I need to talk. I think, I think that, that would do me a lot of good, uh, that side of the table, uh, you guys have been pretty smart.
You're all right, we'll keep you.
All right, good, Derek.
I'm gonna ask you one more thing, so is there anything you wanna say for, sir, before we do?
I think it's good, the folks, you know, way to communicate, it's setting a lot better. And one thing Eric said, Dan, which would help me, the way I was asked, is get your goals, the ones and twos is not, you know, the, the piles is that, let's get that done, I bet, I'll get this, whatever, twenty-five thousand, I do ten less. Get that done, that's, I don't see that as a goal, raise some more hands, check the piles, but get at these overarching goals, which, you know, I heard that, that's what, that's what helps me, that's helped, that helps me, helped you, stuff done, that's what I see happening, what y'all doing, so, that'll be very helpful.
If you need to clean up some stuff, clean it up, move on, because these goals, this is why, in my mind, why you all ran, is to, to deal with these things. These things are only important if they get in the way of those things, so, in my mind, that's your call. Anything else you wanna say?
No, I just wanna thank, other than thanking everybody for their time and being present, participating in the process, I think that as we continue to move forward, there's still work ahead of us. But as long as we're all still willing to be in it for the whole, and for our community, then we'll find success.
This is just, this is a beginning, this is a step, and so, you know, plans your comment, you know, what happens, so that's gonna be, you know, well, the goal piece is next, but this other piece is the framework to help you all, kind of say, aren't we in, you know, in, in between these guardrails, right? But it, what happens next is really dependent on what you wanna do. And with that, I'll say, I, I really did enjoy being with you all today, I won't forget you, we'll see if there's other stuff that happens, and I get invited back, bring that out or not, but I enjoyed it, uh, you know, with a lot of energy and passion, and cities need that right now.